Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the July 3, 2013 City Council Meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order. A regular City Council Meeting. The City of Satellite Beach, July 3, 2013, approximately 7:00. Please join me in a moment of silence. And in our moment of silence, please keep in the thoughts and prayers the 19 firefighters and their families that perished. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is attending tonight's meeting by phone. So she'll be with us by phone. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Citizens' Comments on Non-Agenda Items. So the floor is open for Citizens' Comments. Here are none. Move on to Agenda Item Number 4, City Council Comments. What's that?
I have nothing. All right, Mr. Mayor.
I attended a wake for former Mayor Ferrante's mom last Friday. And I also attended the open house at Complete Heat &amp; Air. And that was pretty good. And I know Courtney's probably going to go over this in her report, but I went on the Facebook page that you had set up, and I think it's great. And I think it's excellent that we're getting out information that's factual information, you know, for people who want to use that type of medium for information. So I just, that's all I have.
I also attended Complete Air. It was very interesting. Also attended Civ Mill, and meet a lot of interesting people, making good connections there. And the Fint program, I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago with John Stone, and I think we have some real opportunities with them, with Sampson Island. There's some funds there, so hopefully, Karen and I, we can work on something there. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 5, City Attorney's Report.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City Manager, Courtney?
Thank you. I'm going to speak into the mic this time, since I've gotten a lot of complaints from my fellow citizens out there. I did complete the, or did attend the Complete Air Open House at 1395 South Patrick Drive. And I don't know, we've all seen the outside, but if you've had a chance to see the inside of that building, he did a beautiful job with that building. So we want to thank him for his investment in our community, as well as Mr. Edward Rensing, who's completed the renovation at 1100 Highway A1A, which is on the corner of Jackson. That was another nice renovation that we've seen. Some of our older buildings are now starting to get facelifts and occupants, so that's exciting. I do, staff is drafting a letter that we would like to send to our new businesses, as well as our new investors in our community. So when we get that drafted, we'll bring that back to council, so you can approve. And that would be, obviously, from the mayor and council thanking our investors in our community. We did receive a $25,000 technical assistance grant for the A1A corridor engineered concept plan, and this is a CRA project. We applied for that DEO grant with the assistance of John Fergus, and then with the, also assistance of our own councilwoman, got their efforts, because we did receive the full amount. And we are currently writing the scope of services for that grant, and our Community Redevelopment Advisory Committee will be completing that project. I did include a letter to the mayor from Dr. John Potomsky, who is the chairman for the Brevard Commission on Aging, complimenting our staff members, Chief Hughes, Linda Harlow, as well as our volunteer Marietta Restivo, for a presentation they provided to the commission on our aging, on our communities for a lifetime. And then also, again, our Facebook page is now at 105 likes. And we have, we, it seems like we're getting a lot of, the most reaction from our postings on recreation, so that seems to be a point of interest for people. And so, and you can see in that when we post something, it's starting to be shared. We do have two action items. Our budget calendar is in your agenda packet, but we do need you to officially schedule a special meeting for July 31, 2013, to, for us to present your proposed budget, and then set the tentative mileage rate for the fiscal year 1314 budget.
Do we want to take care of that now? Take care of that now? Is that 31st? Did everyone hear?
We also have, we're also requesting approval from council to accommodate, council, myself, as well as our assistant city manager, Andy Stewart, to attend the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. So basically, we're asking you to go ahead and reserve funding for that, and then please get back to us if you can go to that conference, if you have not done so already.
Council wishes?
Is that needed?
A motion? A motion or just a consensus?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager, the assistant city manager, and any council members who might be interested in attending the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further counsel discussion?
Just one question. When do you need to know by as far as the deadline for registration and stuff? I mean, what, how fast do we need to get back with you?
If you could get back to us by next Friday, that would be good.
Okay.
And then also, I am driving there, so, and I have a big van. You're welcome to.
I'm driving with Courtney.
Okay. July 12, then, all right.
The mom van.
Does Councilwoman Gott, any comment on it?
Do you have any comments on the attendance of the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. They're discussing the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, and they wanted to know, do you have any comments on participation? And Councilwoman Montanaro made a motion to approve those to attend with reserved funds, and Vice Mayor Breimer seconded that. I'm going to put you back on speaker. Can you hear?
Yes. Are you asking for my vote on the motion?
Your input.
I don't have any input.
Thank you. No further. Can you pull council, please?
Councilwoman Gott?
On the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes four to none.
That's all I have?
Okay. Thank you very much. Also, welcome, I'm sorry, apologize, Andy. Welcome. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, Discuss Take Action on Agreement Between Satellite Beach School Robotics Program and the City of Satellite Beach for the Utilization of the Oleander Room.
Staff is requesting approval of the agreement drafted by Attorney Beadle, as well as some language changes provided by Councilwoman Gott between the City of Satellite Beach and the Satellite High School Robotics Team for the use of the Oleander Room located in the Scotty Colt Municipal Complex. I believe the city attorney has a couple of comments.
Yes. Councilwoman Gott reworked what I had submitted to staff, and I am only suggesting two changes to what was in here. On Page 2, under the indemnity, on the 11A1, the fourth line down with the parentheses that says including sidewalks, I would like to have common areas and sidewalks. And then on, in Paragraph 2, it's, because of how it was redone, it's just a verb tense issue. But in Paragraph 2, the second line near the end where the word release appears?
Paragraph 2, which?
Same.
Number 2?
Number 2.
Where the word release appears? Release, lease, or?
Put hereby, and then put an S after, on the end of release. So it's hereby releases, and those are the only two suggested revisions that I have.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Satellite High School Robotics Program and the City for the Utilization of the Oleander Room with changes as outlined by City Attorney Beadle.
I'll second it.
A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro.
Get the language in there, and six that basically covers the concerns that I had as far as liability issues. I think it's important to be in there. Thank you.
Mark, any?
No, sir. I'm done.
Any discussion from Councilwoman Gott?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here for the robotics?
No.
Okay. Here are none. I'll open it up for Citizens' Comments on Agenda Item Number 7. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Counsel, any further comment? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion carries four to nothing, passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, Discuss Take Action on Presentation of Salary Survey Update by Andy Pellegrino, Cody &amp; Associates.
On March 4, 2013, the City Council approved an agreement with Cody &amp; Associates Inc. to perform a salary study for the City of Satellite Beach. Mr. Nick Pellegrino and Linda Bunting are here to present that, the, our findings, and that study was included in your packet.
Thank you. My name is Nick Pellegrino, Principal Partner of Cody &amp; Associates. A little bit about the company. We've been in business for the last 40 years in the state of Florida. We've done several studies for you all in the past. The object is, this is an update-type study. It's kind of the backbone of your first-hand plan that is both competitive, so you can recruit, and get the people that you want, the quality, and the number of people that you want, and for retention, to keep the people, the good people that you do have for quite a while. We looked at salaries, and we also, then we recommended an implementation plan, how to get into it, and we can, I'll discuss that further in a second. Now, our approach to the study is, we reviewed all of your job descriptions again, your current pay plan, all the elements that you have into your administrative type. We were careful of matching apples to apples, and we do, we do, we don't do it by title. We do the matches by looking at their job descriptions and such. And we've probably done every agency in Brevard County and the surrounding counties in the past several years. We had some input sessions with the city manager and her staff. And taking all that into consideration, we developed a implementation plan and recommendations for your, for your review. The results, just briefly, not to get into great detail, but approximately, we said 57, lower below the survey averages. Now, this is not unusual, because of, you know, during this economic time that everybody has gone through, all the cities and counties have gone through, it's been kind of dead. Some people have been, you know, upgrading their plans, others have not. But the amount and type that we saw from you is fairly standard. More and more people now are starting to get, to look at it. We, for the last three years, we may, we're doing three studies when we used to do 25. This year, it looks like people are starting to, you know, they've got their shopping order now, they're looking ahead. We also found that your overall fringe benefit package, we look at all of it together, and the cost factor there, it is comparable and equitable. The implementation plan that we are recommending to you or for consideration, objective is to get everybody in the recommended ranges that we have proposed to you. Now, I know the city is considering a COA increase, and so we built that in. We just said that the best way to handle that is to actually give the COA increase to the individual's base salary, and then anybody that, after that point, falls out or is still below the minimum of what we recommended, then adjust that. And that part, using the 3%, and then looking at people that were below, that was about $11,000, just for bringing everybody to minimum after you made adjustments. So with that, I can open it up to any questions you do have, and happy to answer.
Questions, please, council?
I looked it over, and I, you know, I think some of the things that you were proposing, you know, are in line with where, you know, we're actually looking, or what we've been looking at. We know we have different departments that definitely need to be looked at, public works being around them. And I saw, you know, from, from most of the ranges that I saw, they were pretty much in the ballpark figures that, you know, that we were in. So I don't have any other comments or questions.
Just the only question I had is, as far as benefits go down the road, you see things coming down the road that we're going to need to consider that aren't part of our plan right now? In other words, you said we've got a pretty good benefit plan going. Are there things that are going to be hot buttons down the road that we need to watch?
Yeah, well, yeah, there are. And the fringe benefits?
Yeah.
Medical insurance?
Okay.
And retirement. Those are the two key things that people are honing in on, because they're the biggest cost items. The medical insurance, and I'm pretty versed on that, because I'm on the board of health first, and I could see all this information that we keep getting, and it is not looking good. And especially when they're getting into the Obama plan in 2000, well, next year. Nobody really knows where it's going. And there's, the only way we're going to find out is when it starts being implemented. They'll see a lot of holes. But those are the two items. All the other stuff is kind of peripheral, really. The number of days that you give for vacation sick leave, it's a factor, and it becomes unpaid liability, unfunded liability, in the long run. You have to watch off of that. And a lot of people have fallen into that trap with when a person's terminated or leaves and stuff like, they have such.
Just a follow-up question. As far as health, first health plans goes and that sort of thing, how are you guys positioning yourselves with the cities to try to accommodate some of the demands you see coming? Is there going to be changes with the health plan that you see, or?
For the city plans?
Okay.
Yeah, they, there's so many things and so many factors that go into it. But, you know, speaking of that, not officially, but we're a community-based organization, which we take into account pretty carefully.
What other areas did you use, or did you outside of Brevard County for the figures?
We look at surrounding towns.
Okay.
Because that's, especially in some of the, are your key positions, that's where you have a vacancy, that's where you have to go. Then we look at statewide, if you have to go statewide, we couldn't, we didn't, listen like that. We tried to get, we, we got all good, we really got good information from the governmental sector, from the private sector, they're just, and we have to get it, and they don't get it. The way we kind of back into that, we look at the, the public, the technology.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your point. At this time, let me open it up for public comment, then I'll bring it back to council. Public comment on Agenda?
It seems that might have died.
Thank you. John, someone can look at that or tap on it and see if we?
Sorry.
That's okay, no. Thank you for letting us know. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it very much. Any comment on?
Is YouTube on?
Lights on?
It is.
Yes, ma'am? Any public comment on this Agenda Item? Thanks, Steve, for telling. Here are no public comment. Bring it back. Do I have a motion to accept the study?
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion?
Just, just kind of some thoughts from Courtney. How do you see this moving forward and that sort of thing, Courtney? What's, what's your thoughts?
Basically, what we were looking at was trying to do a 3% increase for all employees next year. We would like to bring everybody to the minimum, but given the news that we got on healthcare today, we're probably just going to be able to do the 3% this year, and then start implementing the plan, bringing people to the minimum, dealing with the.
The questions you asked, and, you know, there was information in here that kind of touched on it. And these are things that we're going to have to be looking at next year.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, these are, you know, we know what we're doing this year, but it's next year that we have to be really concerned about, how we're going to navigate through this.
The other thing I wanted to add is, thank you for doing this. I know this was a big issue last year when we were doing so. This does give them some type of an idea that we are looking for, there's some vision moving forward, and that there's a plan, whether it's 15, or 14, or 13, whatever the number happens to be. I'm just glad you did it. So I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, and we appreciate you doing it.
I wanted to also just pass my compliments on to Cody &amp; Associates. They did a really good job, and they're very responsive to us throughout this process. They probably met with us three times on this, and, and we appreciate their, their work. They did a good job.
Thank you.
Any further comments from council?
Nope.
Here are none, Lenore? Excuse me. Councilwoman Gott? I apologize. Any comment on Agenda Item Number 8?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Lenore, please call the council.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Agenda Item 8 passes four to nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1073. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1073, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Article 2, Division 4 regarding the duties of the beautification board as it relates to its review of landscaping and irrigation plans, amending Article 3, Division 1 of Chapter 30 Satellite Beach Code regarding procedures for review of site plans, amending exceptions to process, providing authority to building official to grant administrative deviations for modifications of site plans, providing parameters to building official upon which deviations can be granted, amending Article 4 zoning with regard to the Community Redevelopment Agency's authority to review architectural elevations of facades, exterior changes to structures, and colors of roof materials, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance 1073.
Thank you. Counsel comments? Mr., we would like to, any counsel comments on it first?
No.
Not at this point, no.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The title block doesn't put you to sleep. We'll do our best to do the same thing, but I would like to thank everybody that was a bit involved in that, but the, any blame goes on us as far as doing it for you, but we had some good input from your building official, your city manager, and, and other individuals, and also one before your planning zoning board, as you know, is a backup, so it wasn't just done in the dark. Before I do, I have a PowerPoint for you, but before I get into that, I just want to indicate, which I did give remarks and the backup trying to do with this. One was, there would be some site plan reviews that your building official could review administratively that would not, in our mind, have to come before city council or other boards for review. In other words, there was, so that's one thing to keep in mind as we go through that, that we try to do that. And also, there might be some instances where the building official could grant deviation in certain specific development review situation without compromising the ten of the city's policies or regulations. And you have a number of advisory board reviews on site plans that are not necessarily, I wouldn't say not normal, but I mean, you do have abundances of that, and we're making an effort to perhaps, where it wouldn't be a problem to eliminate those. And also, to do a little more clear definitions in terms of what major and minor modifications are, because we're allowing, if it's a minor modification, it could be reviewed administratively versus that. And then also, as something that's an administrative item, really, is the application process itself. We have follow-up in terms of what the applications would look like, not only for the site plan application, but deviation form, if there was some one that could go. There are some of the things that we, we did as far as in the ordinance itself. And I guess we really were launched on this several months ago, where you want us to adjust the site plan process, and then the, probably the best place to start is administratively allowing the building official to review certain types of development. And if you look at Section 30301, site plan review exceptions, or for, in other words, that, that would not go before the planning and zoning board, or would not go before the council for, of course, single-family and dual-family dwellings, which you have now. A new one is other new construction of less than 2,500 square feet of floor area, other alterations that do not increase, require parking by more than 10 spaces, or assess value of more than 50% during any 12-month period. I'll go through these, and then we'll come back. New sign on previously developed site, removal of protected trees, resurfacing of vehicle use areas, administrative deviations to approval of site plans for Section 303. Those would allow the building official to do things administratively. A couple of things that are different than what you had previously is new construction, if it's less than 2,500 square feet of floor area, the building official could review that. It would still have the same building requirements. There still are some information that could be required out of the, the requirements that are necessary for a site plan, for example, that could be called for the building official, but it would not come before the board itself in those situations. We put the, the one criteria in that would be if it was going to trigger more than, than 10 spaces, and parking spaces, of course, in some instances, you would have one for 200, or one for 300 square feet, and that, that would be what your, what your trigger would be for that. It does not mean that it would be a building permit without site plan reviewed by your building official, but he would be able to call in any information that's necessary for, for that. Are there any questions on any of those at this point? I think I happened to be at one of your council meetings when you had a business that was here, and it was, and I think it probably, if my memory serves, it was probably the one you went to the open house at, probably.
Yes.
That's what it was.
And I did attest with John that certain things would be, would be done, that would be able to be done administratively and not be done through the different reviews. I guess the important thing to remember is, under Number 2, the building official also, well, let's not talk about deviations first, but in, in this particular section, I think it's important, because you're going to have alterations that would be necessary, but wouldn't, wouldn't really need a full review from your council or the planning zoning board. Any questions on that at all? I work a lot of different jurisdictions, and generally, that is the approach. Even people that do site plan review by, by boards don't have a threshold, and don't do it in terms of everything that's come. Section 33, 30.303, administrative deviations. Started off with, and remember, when you do deviations, it is in certain situations where you feel that somebody administratively, what I need to, to also thanks for some of the input is Mr. Beadle. Mr. Beadle and I talked in terms of when things can be specifically, the building of. Mr. Beetle and I talked in terms of when things can be specifically a building official that would have subjective powers or something. And so that's why these are very limited in terms of deviation situations. We're talking about architectural features that not protruding beyond a certain length so that you're not going to have, well, the, you have a six-foot situation here and he would do that and you wouldn't have any parameters for that. So these are limited. I looked at some other things that possibly deviations. There are some jurisdictions, quite frankly, that give within a percentage. Courtney and I are familiar with setbacks where you could, somebody could deviate up to 10% on a setback for a site plan. The problem you get with doing that is then everybody expects it. And so you automatically then have that as a request all the time. So these may seem very specific and not very many. And then there are some that have to do with water management standards in terms of slope and all those things, but they can be handled by minor modification and without deviating from what the standards are. If the standards of a certain type of flow is there, we think it should be there, you know? And so I think that's why that's a little bit limited there from that standpoint. The next one talks about the number of advisory board meetings that currently take place. You have the situation now where your CRA board would review in the beautification. I guess the CRA advisory committee is in the beautification board. Is that correct? Two? And I think you get the input and I kind of interviewed John quite a bit to see when he goes before those boards with the different responsibilities that they have, whether there's a lot of difference from his recommendation. And it does not seem to be much. You're still following the rules and regulations for that. So that's why we thought it wasn't necessary to actually have those situations. The other type of situation in thirty, well, and you can see, we hit it not only in the section that we had, the three oh two, three oh three section, but there are other places where you need to eliminate in thirty-two, twelve, and thirty-four, twenty-two, the site plan review procedure. Was pointed out to me that there were not just the one section that we're working with, but other sections that if you were to go along with this, they are, of course, part of the ordinance as well because they're removing the responsibilities at that point. Does not mean that you would not have that input, but you would not have to go before the board. Next one would be modification of site plans. That's fairly important because, well, they're all important because whether something is minor or a major modification, minor modifications would be something that would be, the building official would be allowed to see what input he needed in terms from the applicant to show that the site plans were met in terms of the requirements. But a major modification is major if it involves a change in use of density and increase in the number of structures or change that the building official, that are off-site impacts. And the way the ordinance reads basically is on the major modification is defined as anything other than the major modification becomes a minor modification, which is on the page six of your ordinance. And that was some good input from the attorney rather than try to do a lot on the minor modifications. We came to the conclusion that major modifications, of course, as I said, would be changes in density, increases in number of structures or those that could cause adverse changes in the internal functioning. But the minor modifications are those that do not qualify as a major modification. So it gives you some, for example, if your main structure would be slightly shifted, that would be something that would be allowed as a minor modification. But if it affects, and again, you remember the alteration one I had before, if it affects a bunch of parking spaces or it affects the internal functions, then there is a reason for you to not have that as a minor modification. Then you would see that as being consistent with these types of things that we've done. And again, just to clarify, we've also done modifications on the application process. It's not anything new, but it would allow you a form that has a deviation request if somebody needs one, that would go with an application. At this point, there may be some questions or some input. John, is there anything that you wanted to add to what we said? Ms. Lawrence?
I think one thing needs to be said is the impact of this ordinance, to be honest, such as complete air. That basically takes a site plan that takes 90 days and reduces it down for that applicant to three to five days. So I think that's substantial. The other one is where the site plan is triggered, meaning about 2,500 square feet or some of those other triggers. It takes, again, that 90-day site plan and reduces it down to 45 days, cuts it in half because of the elimination of those boards. So again, I think that's substantial and this is a great ordinance.
Question, have you tried it? The ordinance out, have you run scenarios through it to make sure it works in two ways? Does it really speed up the time? And doesn't it, hopefully, it doesn't cut any corners structurally or anything that's going to cause any problems down the line?
The dry run was complete air. Because that was during that process. And we looked at that as one of the models. Where would that have been? How long would it have taken? And so I feel pretty confident that's that type of construction, again, 2,500 square feet, that was around eight or 900. So, and again, you know, as Mr. Rue stated, it doesn't ignore any of the requirements of the code. We look at that as staff anyway. It just, there's not that extra layer on it. So things, there are things additional responsibility on the planning zoning board. The things we look at with the beautification board. The nice thing that we set up with the beautification board, really set up, was having all those approved plans on there. And by having that, all the current plants, it's real easy that it wouldn't have to go to the beautification board unless they deviated from their list. And that's a pretty comprehensive list of the plants. And that's their primary function. So with that list in place, it makes it very easy for both staff and the planning zoning boards to look to make sure that it meets only two that defines in detail the architecture design standards. So with that also in the land development regulations, again, it makes it fairly easy for the planning zoning boards to look at that as they look at the rest of the requirements.
Further counsel?
I thought the dry run question was a good question. Maybe it's a good one. We've got something happening.
And I've done a little bit of scenarios, just taking advisory board meetings out, playing around with the days that, when you schedule those things, you can't generally schedule them at the same week. So that usually adds 30 to 60 days just on that process. And I also looked at, the reason I gave you the square footage I did for the 2,500 was to give you a chance that if there was a building that was a new building, the building official still could require the same information he needed as a site plan and those things, the requirements. That alone saves 69 days on something. And sometimes it can be in terms of a month or two. If you'd like it for second reading, I can give you a little scenario of some of the changes I see. But I didn't know the particular site plans, but I can tell you that it's going to save days, not months.
My reason for the question was to make sure we've gone as far that the process works in a multitude of things. Yes, complete air, we tried that. Tried other things just to make sure we've gone as far that it does work. Obviously, you feel it's going to save time.
And we added one section that makes sure that whatever information the building official needs to have, I think any person to develop a site pursuant to any of the foregoing must provide the building official with all information documentation to support the position. That allows him the ability, that's something that the city manager and I wanted to make sure we had, that requires, he has the ability then to reach back in and ask for site plan approval, et cetera, the different verification of things that are without going necessarily going before a board.
And I could just add that the reason why we wanted that was because when complete air came through, and this is just a great example, but I would not have required a site plan for that because it was all impervious surface. There was no changes to the impervious surface of the area, no changes to the parking plans, nothing. It was just filling in an area or walling up an area. So that's why we wanted to make sure that John had the flexibility that if he didn't need it, that we didn't require it because they're costly. You know, it could cost thousands of dollars for somebody to provide something that we don't need. And we wanted to make sure he had the flexibility for that.
And the other side of that is it was a brand-new building and it was within the 20 feet after because you're not going to have that before the board otherwise.
Right.
That's why.
We actually have another one also, United Methodist Church, is waiting in the wings for a purpose to pass, just for that reason. They actually have a building here, a building here, and a breezeway between the two. And they're literally wanting to enclose each end and add a little portion of root that is not covered in that breezeway. But according to our current code, any increase in gross floor area requires a site plan. So this is an example of where they would have to go through that whole site plan process just because of closing that little breezeway.
Engineering plan, and that's a lot of money.
The whole intent of what we were looking at doing was making it a little bit easier for some of the business owners in our community to be able to do things they needed to do. And, you know, the plant list that you talked about, that was done through the LDR committee back in the late 90s. That plant list came up and it went to the beautification board. And, you know, I was a liaison to that board for a number of years. And, you know, to see some of these people have to come in and go through that process was tedious. I mean, you know, I think what's being proposed allows you the flexibility to make sure that the city's concerns are addressed. And I think this is going to be beneficial. And we're not the only city doing this. And I know in my industry, you know, we're looking at streamlining permit from all across the state now. So this is not unusual, what we're doing here.
Let me, this time, open it up for a public comment on agenda item number nine. And public comment for agenda number nine. Have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro, and Councilwoman Gott. I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Councilwoman Gott, comment on this agenda item?
No comment.
Thank you. At this time, any further comments from council? Here are none. Call the council?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Marcatino?
Yes.
Motion passes four, nothing. Moving on to agenda.
Just want to say, Jim and John, thank you for working on this.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the input.
Okay. Moving on, agenda item number 10. Discuss, take action on purchase of recreation software package.
Thank you. Staff is requesting the purchase of software package from RecPro to manage the recreation department program registrations and facility reservations. Currently, their software packages that we have now is starting to fail. So this is somewhat of an emergency. Actually, it is an emergency. And we're requesting to piggyback off of the city of Palm Beach, piggyback off their RFP process in their contract. And Carrie's here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Well, as luck would have it, our RecPro program failed the first week of summer registration. So we were receiving $7,000 to $8,000 by hand, which is interesting, documenting it so that we could later, if we got RecPro backup, fix it. Our problem was is we have run out of data space, if I'm saying that correctly. The RecPro program that we have, we purchased in '95 because it was sold a couple of years after that RecPro was sold to Active. Active is actually not wanting to service our program any longer. Adam was able to reach them, literally, I mean, if you call a service, you should be able to have them call you back. Adam tried for a couple of days to get hold of them. A week and a half later, they provided us with a temporary measure to get additional data, but told us that it was not going to last very long. Adam's been monitoring how fast we're using it. And he told us last week we probably only had a day left. So we're kind of on borrowed time now. You remember that we do take in almost a half a billion dollars in income a year, $454,000 projected for next year. It's going to be real hard to do that handwriting receipts. The RecPro program, we did, in the office, we researched my rec desk, my rec office, RecPro, RecTrack, and Active. As did Palm Beach, they went out for a bid for RFPs. And through their evaluation process and through our internal run in our office, we both came to the same conclusion. They have ordered RecPro and it's being installed. They think they'll be up and running right about the middle of July. RecPro has told us that we can sign a contract with them. They think it'll be about four to five weeks before we're up and running. So even then, we're going to have some possible issues. Scary, it's very scary.
We're, questions coming out of capital assets?
Yes, yes.
Carrie, this package, will it do everything you need for the foreseeable future? And I know one thing that we've always talked about with this system. Can they pay online? And how, you know, is that going to work for you? Or is that module, if it's not with it now, can it be added?
The price of $1,7200 and change included the module for online registration for both program activities and also reservations. The company has a recommended credit card gateway and processor. Gateways, the people that take the money, and processors is one of the processes. Two different ones, I know. Their choice, their choice that they recommend to people, for example, is called federal payments. And they're used to working strictly with municipalities. The interesting thing is they're, they have a system in federal payments for use of credit cards where you can charge the service fee back to the customer. And not all of the credit card companies I've talked to will allow you to do that. Our new assistant city manager, Andy, is working on trying to get credit cards in. We can figure out if we're going to go with the recommended program, federal payments, or if Andy would prefer to have the whole city under one. And maybe that would be federal payments. I don't know. We're working on that, but he's working on that now.
But this program will accomplish that?
Yes.
I don't know if you got the answer to this one or not, but as far as security goes, how hard is it to break into this system as far as bring it down? And I know it's on our server and that sort of thing, but I could see with a budget of half a million dollars. What kind of firewalls does it have? Do you know, Carrie, at all?
I had Adam look at that. There's host it yourself and have a big thing that we would have to buy, or we would allow them to host it.
Vendor hosting.
Yeah, vendor hosted, in which case they maintain everything and they have the security for that. Adam was concerned if we hosted it here because people would be coming in processing through our computer. He was concerned about that, but not about hosting that. He was also concerned that if we tried to do it internally, he has not done that yet in any of the other departments at that level. And he was concerned about jumping into that.
So you're proposing that, or I guess what he's proposing is that we have another company that's to host, we're registering through someone else, in other words.
We register through us, they manage the operation.
Okay. Because that's how normally we do it, through that same scenario. And it seems to work pretty good.
Just as far as speeds down the road, is there something that we're going to end up incurring?
I think you negotiate those things. You know, you're probably going to be looking at a contract and down the road, you adjust from there.
Question on the existing budget that's there. Is there, and again, just trying to think back, is there $4,000?
to think back, is there $4,000 in each of the department's account for software upgrade?
It was for software upgrades and computer replacements, so yes, we do have that.
Is part of that going to be used for this, software upgrade?
We were going to use the capital assets fund balance for this, and if any unused computer replacement dollars or software dollars would roll over into carry forward next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like the idea of being able to charge it back to the people that are using it too, because that's, I mean, if I register for something on the county, basically, I'm paying the surcharge for the credit card for using the card. So I don't think we should be absorbing those costs, I like the idea of being able to, however, you know, Andy wants to work on setting it up. I think, I think the users of the card need to be absorbing whatever the charges are from the card company.
Then I'm going to ask this question, and is that legal? You charge them a different rate because they use the card?
It's just, all they're doing is paying the fee of the surcharge for the card.
I'm asking Jim.
That stations do it all the time.
No, I'm done, that's all I had.
Would you, Councilwoman Gott, comment on this agenda item?
No comment.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up for public comment, citizens' comments.
Steve Headley, resident. Anytime I hear off-site hosting, I think, who owns the data? And who backs it up? And by that, I mean, when the Beachcaster went down, we had, as a city, had been providing a company to update, thank you, to update, to update city addresses. When the Beachcaster Committee initially went back to that company and said, we want that database back, the company said no. It's important, and I've come across this in my own dealings with other companies, it's important that part of the contract says that they supply a backup in a workable format to the city, so that years down the road, we have the data if RecPro goes out of business and belly up, we don't like them, whatever.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, can we address that, and if we need to check into it?
Anytime we allow a vendor to host any of our data, we require, we would require the backup to be sent to us quarterly, or even on a monthly basis, in a format that we can use. We also require the vendor to have two separate areas in the nation that holds the data, so if they have an accident at one, they don't lose it. So that's a requirement that we put in our contracts.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve, for bringing it up. Any further public comment on this agenda item? Here and none, back to council.
I'll make a motion to purchase the software and piggyback on a contract that Palm Beach County has with RecPro to bring the software in for our city.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer.
Do we need to include the amounts?
We have, we want to include, we'd like the amounts included here, 17,5 and 3,000 annual maintenance fee.
I'll amend my motion to include those.
Same.
Motion amended, Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Brimer. Any further comments from Councilwoman Gott?
Could you repeat the motion we're voting on?
Yes, we're to accept, we're going to purchase the software package from RecPro in the amount of 17,5 and 3,000 a year annual maintenance fee.
Thank you.
Any comment, further comment, Councilwoman Gott?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment from council? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries four, nothing on agenda item number 10. Moving on to agenda item number 11, discuss take action on permit for discharge of stormwater Phase II municipal separate storm storage system, MS4S.
Yes, staff is requesting to approve, or authorize a payment of the MS4 permit application fee. This is 7,988 dollars from the Stormwater Utility Fund, and we're required to do this every five years. These fees are based on population, and we include the backup in your packet for your information, but it is something we just have to do, and it has not been budgeted, so we're requesting that to be, that you approved us, and we'll provide the budget amendment at the end of the year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Question, so this is coming from Stormwater Utilities?
Yes.
But it wasn't budgeted?
Right, it wasn't a budgeted item in the Stormwater Utility Fund.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment?
Yes, sir.
Open this one up for public comment. On agenda item number 11. Here and none, bring it back to council. Yep, so every five years, this is a fee that we are, some cost going to have to-
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Gott, comment on agenda item number 11?
No comment.
Thank you. You have a motion?
Let me just-
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries on agenda item number 11, four, nothing. Moving on to agenda item number 12, discuss take action on request for a lien reduction on 532 Carriage Circle.
Okay, this, this item is a request for a reduction in lien at 532 Carriage Circle. The subject property has been in foreclosure prior to 2009, and during that process, numerous violations remain unabated by the property owners. Violations included abandoned vehicles, property maintenance, and nuisances. The resulting violations ultimately became liens on the property. Wells Fargo Bank has since obtained possession of the property and remedied the violations and is subsequently requesting this lien reduction in order to sell the property at market value, and Mr. Stone's here to answer any questions, as well as the attorney.
Yes, we have Attorney Michael Eisner here, representing Wells Fargo.
Good evening, my name is Michael Eisner, I'm an attorney representing Wells Fargo. Appreciate your time this evening. Just by way of a little bit of background for you, we didn't take ownership, Wells Fargo did not take ownership of the property until December 14 of 2012. This property was previously owned by a couple, the Citronis, who both passed away. In 2008, the last survivor of them passed, and the children remained in the home with grandchildren, I believe, and that's when all your problems began. Upon our taking control of the property through, after a number of bankruptcies and the court proceedings, we took it back. The property was, as you can imagine, and you probably know from staff, in a complete disheveled condition, garbage everywhere, there was absolutely no work done whatsoever to the landscape. We've since gone ahead and remade that. The house today, and I don't mind approaching, I've shown these to Mr. Stone already, these are current pictures of the property, so-
Thank you.
-you can see what Wells Fargo has done to remedy all the violations. Each one of the violations was addressed. I think what you see before you is the result of Wells Fargo having put on the market and sold. We've requested a reduction in the fines, we've made an offer to the commission of $5,000 plus your hard cost. We know that we could certainly ask for less, we didn't want to do that, we wanted to be fair to the, to the city, and so hence our offer, and I'm here to, if there's any questions anyone has, I'm willing to happen to answer those for you. I'd also like to thank Mr. Stone, who's been in constant contact with my office on almost a daily basis, in order to go ahead and make sure that this property was in fact up the code, and I went by the property myself before coming to the meeting this evening, and so I can represent that. The picture you have there, I believe, was taken either yesterday morning or this morning, so it looks, it looks good.
Thank you. John, real quick, it has been, obviously, the pictures look like it has been brought up, everything's been corrected there?
Yes, I have, the liens were for the pool and for a vehicle, both of those have been remedied, as well as the landscaping, which, they actually had, there was an outstanding bill, the city had came in and voted one time, they immediately, once they became aware of it, came up and took care of that outstanding bill, and have since maintained that property.
And with the amount they're offering us, we're covering all our fees and costs to the city?
Yes, we are, yes, thank you.
I initially had some questions on this, and I did call John, and all of the violations basically were, were there when the tent, when the people were there, when family members were there, it had nothing to do with Wells Fargo, they didn't have possession of the home while any of that stuff was going on, and that was, that was what I wanted to make sure I clarified with John, so I'm okay with this.
So what we need to do is, and I'm okay with it as well, so what we need is a motion in the, in the 5,383.57, is that correct, Mr. Gray?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I like that motion.
Second. And a motion by Vice Mayor Brimer, excuse me, second by Councilman Montanaro. Councilwoman Gott, any discussion on agenda item number 12?
No, I couldn't hear the motion.
The motion was to approve the settlement for 5,383.57.
5,383.57?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
At this time-
No comment.
Let me open up for public comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm going to open up this agenda item number 12 for public comment.
In 2009, Wells Fargo received 25 billion dollars from the taxpayers as part of bailout. In 2011, 49 states reached an agreement with Wells Fargo and Bank of America for a 25 billion dollar fine for them not taking care and misrepresenting factual things to courts on foreclosures, including robo-signings, of failure to produce services, et cetera. Right now, even as we speak, our state attorney general is in the process of again suing Wells Fargo, along with still 49 other states, half of which have already received, reached a settlement with Wells Fargo. My problem is this, I have no issue with someone coming here with what I would term clean hands, and saying, hey, I have been a good neighbor with you, do this for me, et cetera. Wells Fargo has not been a good neighbor to anyone in this entire country right now. They haven't been, and for Wells Fargo to come here and say, hey, look, we got this property, we've made money on it in the past because of taking part of the loans, we've had to pay out for it because of an agreement, we've been good neighbors, is factually challenged, in my opinion. I don't get it, I'm sorry. The first, the first dip into the hand where Wells Fargo got 25 billion, 12 and a half of which they used to buy, not to help, not to help mortgage owners, they used 12 and a half of the million of it, or 12 and a half billion of it, to buy Wachovia. They are now the second-largest bank in the United States, and they're out here again for another handout from a city. I had sat on the fence for this for a long time, ever since this item came out. I'm not thrilled with reducing this at all. I understand the principle, but as it stands right now, Wells Fargo has not proven to anyone that they are a good neighbor, which is State Farm, but they're not, they haven't shown to be a good neighbor, and I don't think they've shown that work in the interest of anyone in Satellite Beach other than themselves. And I'm not sure, I think if we're going to go this route, we should look at that, because we are a community, and if we're doing this because we want to say that they're good neighbors, they've lost that ability in my mind, they've lost that benefit of the doubt.
Thank you. Further comment on this agenda item? Here and none, bring it back to council.
And that was the reason why I called John Stone, is because I wanted to know if these violations occurred while Wells Fargo was holding the property, and it was not the case. So, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, Steve, and those were concerns that I had, but I can't, I don't feel justified holding them responsible for actions that the people in the House provided the city with. And I understand your concerns, and I understand where you're coming from, because I was there, but I don't think that this is what we're being presented with, this has nothing to do with that. If they were holding the property and this stuff was going on while they were there, I would have a different opinion, but that was not the case.
I'm good.
Councilwoman Gott, any further discussion on agenda item number 12?
No comment.
Thank you. We have a motion on?
No.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries-
Thank you, have a good morning.
Thank you very much. Need a break, or?
No, I'm going to rest a little bit.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back at 8:15.
Thank you, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting.
At this time, we're going to move on to agenda item number 13, discuss take action on ordinance number 1071. Jim?
Ordinance number 1071, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the retirement plan and trust for general employee and police officers and firefighters of the City of Satellite Beach by amending Chapter 46 regarding deferred retirement option plan drop by deleting Section 46-41E5 and Section 46-66E5 regarding third-party to hold drop funds is no longer required, providing for full force and effectiveness, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date, it's the second reading of ordinance number 1071.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1071 on second reading.
This is an item that I recused myself from voting for when it came up under first reading, and I am also recusing myself from voting on this ordinance again, as my wife was an employee and I was in the drop program.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Brimer, do I have a second? Councilwoman Gott?
Vice Mayor Brimer moved. Councilman Montanaro recused himself on second reading. Do we have a second motion?
Yes, I seconded it.
Thank you, I have a second by Councilwoman Gott on agenda item number 13. Any discussion from council on agenda item number 13?
Yes, sir.
Here and none, open it up for public comment on agenda item 13. Here and none, bring it back to council. Motion carries three, nothing.
And for the record, it shows that he, it should show that he abstained and not recused himself.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 14, discuss take action on ordinance number 1072.
Ordinance number 1072, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Community Redevelopment Agency FY 2012/2013 budget, ordinance number 1061, providing an effective date, it's the second reading of ordinance number 1072.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1072 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Brimer, second by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt ordinance number 1072 on second reading. Further discussion from council? Here and none. Councilwoman Gott, any discussion on agenda item number 14?
No discussion.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for a public comment on agenda item number 14. Here.
Steve Headley, not flying to the podium tonight. At best, I think the second reading of this and approving this is premature. Didn't have a problem with the first reading, although I disagree with the decision, but here we are committing to a course of action without an agreement in place. The county has not agreed to it, the county won't agree to it anytime soon. The county has not agreed to it, the county won't agree to it anytime soon. So my question is, why are we having an ordinance go into effect without, based on an agreement that does not exist at this point in time? We have no agreement with the county, and I think that best, we can say that it's, it's an issue that's not ripe for action, it's premature, and shouldn't be taken care of at this time. We can table this, and we shouldn't be going forward basing our actions on an agreement that isn't in place. That doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Further comment on Agenda Item Number 14? Here are none, back to council.
We don't need an agreement with the county to do a budget amendment ordinance, and we don't need an agreement with the county to send money back to the taxing authorities. We have statutory, uh, powers to do both.
Thank you. Any...
No, sir.
Further comment? Okay. Lenore, you, call the council, please.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion carries four nothing on Agenda Item 14. Going on to Agenda Item 15, approve budget calendar for FY 1314.
I'll make a motion to approve the presented calendar for 2013, 2014.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer, to approve the budget calendar for FY 201314. Any discussion from council? All the dates look fine. Doable for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Councilwoman Gott, any comment on the budget calendar?
All those dates are okay with me.
Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to open up for public comment, Agenda Item Number 15. Here are none, bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion, Kim 16, Agenda Items for our next regular council meeting. Courtney?
Um, on your next, at your next council meeting, uh, you'll be doing your second reading on the ordinances you saw this evening. Um, we are trying, uh, to get to you your vacation ordinance for first reading at, on the 17th, and then we'll also be submitting your budget at that meeting.
Okay. Any council member needs or would like to see on?
No, sir.
Okay. And then moving on to Agenda Item 17, Appointments to Boards.
These are reappointments?
These are, as it looks here, reappointments.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, you want to do these individually, or can we do them all at one time?
I think we have to do them individually.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint David Vosper, Vosper to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Term ending...
Page 116.
Page 116.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gott, any discussion?
Uh, this is which appointment?
David Vosper.
Okay. No comment.
Thank you. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint Eileen Kiesel to the Code Enforcement Board, term ending 8116.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer. Any further discussion from council? Here are none. Good poll.
Councilwoman Gott?
I'm having trouble hearing, is this on the appointment of Eileen Kiesel?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Reappointment passes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Lindeman to the Planning Advisor, Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, term ending 8116.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer, to reappoint Dr. Ken Lindeman to CPAB. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
From council? Lenore?
Lindeman?
Is the motion on Lindeman and Smith?
Just on Lindeman.
Just Lindeman?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I poll?
Poll.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint regular member Rodney Smith to a term ending 81516.
Second. A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer. Lenore?
That was for Mr. Smith? Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint regular member Dorothy Gwynne to the Library Board, term ending 63015.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer. Lenore?
That was for the Library Board on Gwynne. Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
I'd like to reappoint regular member Carol Lot, Lot, Lottie to the Library Board, term ending 8115.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Is this on Carol Lake?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to ministerially approve regular member Dave Ryan to the Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement Plan Board of Trustees, term ending 72415.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brimer. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?